Nice to talk with you, Mr. Hall, to work on the first order of business. Director of Agents, just by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, may be visible in liberty and justice for all. First order of business is tonight's agenda. Good motion to accept.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Good motion accepted, all in favor. Aye. Both. So carried. Recommend approval of the minutes of July nineteen twenty-two. There would be a chance to read those, any corrections? Leashes. Good motion there. I'll make the recommendation we accept the minutes.
I'll second.
I have a recommendation, second, all in favor. Aye. Both. So carried. To recommend approval of the planes list for July twenty-second, twenty-two. Twenty-two. Motion to approve. I'll second. We have a motion, second, all in favor. Aye. Both. So carried. Review the account accounts and the financial statements for the general water supply funds for July thirty-first, twenty-two. Motion to two. I'll second. Motion accepted, all in favor. Aye. Both. So carried. And bring this to the Rainier Properties and Rooms Association information on the water levels. I'm taking the chair, really, please. All right. All in favor. All side over. That's it. The mic should be three, Mr. Dumb.
Test one, two.
Yeah.
So the reason we're here tonight is, as some are new aware, maybe some are not, but...
Dan, can you speak into that a little?
A little closer. How's that better? Thank you.
Very well.
So the reason we're here, representing the property owners, and our membership is now around three hundred property owners on Rainier Lake. Substantial part of the tax base, in fact. And while the flood is now behind us, our path forward is to understand how to mitigate in the future, how to prevent, or at least reduce, some of these flood activities. And I think, as most people are aware, one of the biggest issues we tend to deal with, and has been here for a long, long time, is the impingement here at Rainier where it passes under the railroad trestle. And we're working with CN, or trying to work with CN, to get them, as they look at their design for the new bridge, to take into consideration what's been done there previously with the rubble left and the towers that are there, and take into consideration, improve that situation. And in fact, what we're seeing, what we've seen in the most recent plans, as Dennis has seen as well, is that they're in fact going to put further impingement in there with the new bridge and exacerbate our situation. If we have the same water come in the system from other nature we did this year, we'll have a flood that's probably a foot higher.
A foot higher.
Yeah. According to the model, it'll be a foot higher. And of course, that's unacceptable. Speaking with CN, they listen. They don't, well, I won't say they don't understand. They refuse to recognize our concerns and the concerns of the property owners here. So our recourse is to work through the governmental organizations that ultimately will have to approve the design and the installation of that bridge, and try to put enough pressure and emphasis to get those folks to get CNN, or CN, excuse me, to change their method they're looking at and/or their design that will be more accommodative to the concerns we have. So what we're proposing here to the tonight is a motion. One of the things in this, I'm getting ahead of myself here, is a treaty of nineteen oh-nine, and one of the things in that treaty between the two countries is governmental agencies can request the IJC to take action in this regard. And Rainier as a city is one of those governmental organizations. So we're asking the city here, as we did the county, to take this motion and send it forward to the IJTC, to the two senators that represent us, to Rob Staber and others, to once again put more pressure on the IJC and on CN to take the course of action that would be beneficial to the property owners and to the watershed here. And that would include the Coast Guard and the Corps of Engineers. And I think you have already forwarded a letter?
Yes, I've forwarded the draft.
Yeah. Send a forward draft letter. So if we could get a support from the county, I mean, from the city board here to forward that, that would be what we're requesting today. Are there any questions for us?
I would just appreciate you guys coming forward because as a resident here, I worry about being tossed aside by the CN and having really no legal recourse to even market with them. So I don't want to give them the screen. So, and knowing that that just would be so much work to try to at least put what they're trying to build up onto someone else. I would just like to...
They haven't said anything to us, any updates. They, sadly, were either sitting and promising updates and everything, everything they do on this construction. They have nothing.
Well, the...
I, I am here, dealt with the railroad.
Well, that's why they have expression being railroaded.
Yeah.
So, and the... The preliminary design is in place, so unless it changes, it's not going to be a positive situation. We also have engaged a law firm in North Dakota who has done work with the IJC and the Red River Valley over there. And under our letterhead, they have sent a letter off to these same parties, and we'll probably be engaging them additionally to help support us in this effort. We think we need to have legal representation, not just citizens in the darkness here. So we're going to continue to pursue that as an organization as well. And Tom, you had a comment or?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilors, in understanding how that works with the IJC, and if you take a look at the Rainier Lake Convention...
Can you speak into that sort of...
If you, if you take a look at the Rainier Lake Convention from day one in nineteen oh-eight, the commissioners, there's three on each side, three US commissioners and three Canadian commissioners. And they're clothed with the power to do whatever they can to avoid high water and avoid low water. And the direction this needs to go and the process it'll go through is it ultimately has to go through our, our State Department is where the order for the IJC to review this project and vet it properly. So it has to be, you know, a tremendous coordinated effort, and it starts right here, and it starts with the county board. And then we have to move it through that process correctly with Senator Globachar being a senior governmental official from Minnesota, and Staber, and Tina Smith bringing it forward to the State Department. And at that point, then, you know, if the State Department agrees that it needs to be looked into, then they have to try and engage the folks on the Canadian side as well. I, I forget the, if it's World Affairs.
What's the, the...
Global Affairs.
Global Affairs, which would be the counterpart to like our State Department. So it would have to go through those two channels, and then the commissioners would see that it's properly, properly vetted. You know, and this is, is our best opportunity, and we have to keep our foot on the gas.
How quickly do we, I mean, I'm assuming this process needs to be started like yesterday?
Yes.
Because I'm sure these things save time.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they, I'm guessing they're not going to start construction, well, they've been able to get funding and start this process.
Right. I believe they were talking, twenty twenty-four it would be done, wasn't that the?
Put soil sampling this fall.
Yeah, soil, they'll be doing soil boring this fall out in front of the bridge.
Did anybody say anything to about the natives property over there that's also involved with this?
Jeff Cantor and I attended the IJC meeting at Fort Francis, and the Koochin chief was there, and they have not been approached yet. So, you know, that's an obstacle in itself, but it's, you know, the railroad has funny ways of getting things done, and we're not always included in the process. So we have to make sure that this is done properly, it's vetted properly, that we don't go backwards on the flow, and maybe we can get some improvement on that, and maybe some other improvements for the community as well with some of the issues that go out with the railroad.
Well, my idea, I can meet with some of the CN people. You know, we can see the preliminary design, which has, did show any concern for the water levels of Rainier Lake, that's for sure. We can here put a add more concrete to that already flooded channel. So what has to be done here is first identify all the concerned parties, such as the homeowners, the IJC, the Coast Guard, all these concerned parties, identify the concerned parties, and then we have to make it early. You've got to find out the, the approval processes, agencies that have to approve this design. So once we've got the concerned parties and listened to their concerns, then we have to get that in a formal right so that we can let the CN know what our concerns are and then see how they're going to address them. Not only let the CN know what the concerns are, but let the agencies that will be approving the, approving the bridge. So now both the owner and the approval process know what's going on. You know, Cleveland, Cleveland, there are people in Ottawa or something, they know what, what's up here. So we have to make him aware of what is happening in the design, in our concerns about the design or the acceptance of the design, what we can live with, what we can't live with. And so we have to identify all the affected parties, let them get, listen to their concerns, and pass those concerns on to the CN and on to the regulatory agencies. Then immediately be taken place, and hopefully they become open to the design and can satisfy. And in a lot of cases, they may not be able to satisfy all of our concerns, but obviously, some of them, such as restricting the water further, height restrictions, things like that, there's ways of addressing them. And of course, everything has a price tag to it, so hopefully that'll win the design. But that's what has to be done, and we're still early enough yet. So, like I said, somebody has to keep the lead on this, whether, whether you say that, you know, the homeowners association, the city of Rainier, but there's a whole bunch of us that have to be in this, on this side of the fence, and we have to listen to concerns, so they know what we're talking about. And in the design engineer bathroom, wherever it's being designed, whether it's being designed in, you know, Toronto or wherever, may not even know we had a flood. As we cannot, that is the proof, there are no any concerns we have, so that's what we have to do, make, make aware of our concerns and then see what they're going to do. Mr. Mayor, remember when the liaison lady from Washington was here? She should probably come back and see us, I hope she was...
She did, she did last night.
Hope she did.
Yeah, so she brought the preliminary plans, what they were concerned about, and what they, all they were looking at right now is just the... Preliminary plans were just focused in on the cantilever part of the bridge, not the existing pillars, not, not this. And of course, they were going to add some bigger pillars, longer pillars to accommodate a double track. They, they have more plans to put the double track in right now, but in the future, it may or may not happen, you see, which, you know. So, so those are the concerns. Once, once we think they know our concerns, they should be able to design something.
Yeah. If I could stand to the comments that my colleagues here made. The, there is a specific order that, that the IJC can follow if they choose to, and that's to seek what's called a formal order of approval for a project. It's not an automatic that they will ask for that or that they'll enforce that. So that's the purpose of this letter, is to get from the IJC, them to build on their, their process for an order of approval. It's not a given, other projects have gone forward without that process involved. And I think that's what we're seeking out of this effort, is to keep that...
There has to be to make a formal order, just send it out.
Right. And then...
I think the river would just be dreaming and wishing that no process would be followed. And they're smarter than that, they know this process, they know they're going to have to follow it. It's kind of like the processes are presented, and then we move to far.
Now, and there's a second part, and, you know, thinking ahead to what the next steps would be. Should this be successful and there is a formal process followed to, to an order of approval, then that would bring republic hearings into play, an opportunity for people to see what's going on. And then, and then there's a second step, and that's if a, if a new project is put forward, how do you verify that it's going to meet our needs of no further restrictions to flow? The fortunate thing is that on this level, on this river from the Exerbering Lake to the, to the dam, there have been extensive engineering studies done by IJC staff, where they commissioned Canadian Hydraulics Center and the National Research Council, the National Research Council Canada to build these very, these really high fidelity models. They're the gold standard for evaluating what projects would look like. And so, thinking down the road, what I personally would like to see is a third, an independent third party like those organizations validate whatever is put forward as a solution to our problem. Okay, so, so I think to my mind, there's two steps. This is the first step, the second step, should this be successful, then there's a second step of making that process work to get the result that we want. And that, that will be thinking, and, and we continue to vigilance from all of us.
Well, they're talking to the relations office, said they want to work with us, and, you know, I think they probably do until across too much, and then all of a sudden, things change. So, and, and again, nothing against them, they're, they're trying to get their, their business to, you know, to make a profit and everything else, but at the same time, we have concerns. And hopefully they'll listen to them, and if the process is introduced properly, they'll have to. That's all, that's all we want, and hopefully it will work out.
Great.
Let me ask you this, Mayor, you requesting that we do a letter to them, or do you sign on the letter here? It says the Board of Commissioners can request a letter be sent to the IRL WWF. Do you want us to sign on with that, or do you want us just to...
Well, I, I took the liberty of drafting a letter.
I have it.
Okay, and, and then I updated, there was a draft I created last week, and then I updated it after some meetings that we had at the end of the week when the, when the watershed board was in town, to take advantage of their advice and who to send it to, and what can be most effective. So, so that's the request we're asking is for you, for the councilors, to adopt that letter and to send it over, over your letterhead signature.
So the request is that we endorse the letter? We quite read that, that request, that the process be...
Right, that, that you adopt that letter as your own. And, and I'm delighted to work with you, or whoever I need to, 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 to adapt that letter to you.
Is this something that we have to do tonight? We do this tonight, just go ahead and approve that?
Yeah, recommendations are, the letter is...
Okay, I'll, I'll make that a recommendation.
Yeah, now, just before we met today, I realized that I left off a CC list, an important CC list. So that would be an amendment that we would need to do following what we do here tonight.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
But that's, clarify the motion, state it before we... I would mistake the motion, the motion is that we agree with the letter that has been, that has been written. I would like to have the request be that we seek order of approval. Letter. To endorse the letter? To endorse it. To endorse the letter, read it by that. In the, in the letter, clarity states that they'd like to follow the process.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the letter makes two points, it asks, it asks for the water, this is addressed to the watershed board, and it's asked that they insist with the, this is a bottom-up approach. We're going to our local board first, and then they take a turn to their, to their commissioners. And we're asking them, we're asking the board to forward to the commissioners that they assert their authority to issue an order of approval, that's one. And number two is to review, if appropriate, the current conditions and see if that's, the current conditions, you know, as Dan mentioned earlier, there's been a lot of, a lot of attrition over the years there, is to review that, if that needs, if that would require review. So that there's two parts to it.
I, I read the letter, I agree with it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I did too.
Okay. And...
Because they have, there's so much trash that they left from when they built that cantilever bridge. It's all stored up over here, where you see all the pelicans hanging out. All of those tailings should have moved out of there a long time ago, but they've all been sitting there, and that's a choke point in that whole area now. There's a motion on the floor, recommendation. I'll second that. Whatever, recommendation in a second, all in favor. Aye. Both. So carried.
And, and also send it to our fellow representatives.
Yeah.
Through, we have a consultant that can help us get that to, to what they need to get to.
Swallow them. Well, I think, I think, I think it's really important that this process is up ready and placed now because it will return. It may take two, three years, don't get it started now. Takes a process, two, three years to catch up, so...
Just one last point, the next meeting of the commission is, of the International Truck Commission is in October. And they have an agenda, it's a week-long agenda. They start out with the meetings between the global affairs of Canada and the State Department, people from the US. They set the agenda, and then they follow that agenda. And one thing I think is important about the timing is to make this part of that agenda. So in terms of timing, that's, that's what we're shooting for, is to get this on their agenda for their October meeting.
So thank you. I think we'll just let it stand. This is just starting, hopefully the last conversation we had.
Thank you for your consideration.
Well, not perfect, but Jen, you're sneaking up over that twenty-one, twenty-two percent return now. About seventeen eighty was acceptable, but you're keep raising the bar. So that's, that's a good thing. Well, we, we've hit plateau, is what you call it in retail business, which is a good thing. Now just keep an eye on your, because like last year's net profit was thirty-one, now it's twenty-one, which I understand the pricing, but just keep an eye on your pricing, that's where it's declining now.
Yeah, I agree.
Because you know that their base, their prices go, call all those, so you just got to keep an eye on that. Before now, you're at a plateau, you had great sales. And, I mean, they almost mirrored it. I mean, it's amazing. But like I said, now it's just that fine drug, they have to keep an eye on your pricing. I'm sure it's just a nightmare right now, but nothing, going up, going up, going down.
Exactly.
Nothing's going down. But that's my only suggestion, is just keep an eye on it, that's all you can do. But yeah, it's been a great, I'm, I'm curious to see how August is going to be.
Uh, we definitely had a record-breaking Rainier days, so it'll be a good August. And a huge shout-out to the bartenders who worked their butts off the entire weekend to make that possible.
Other than that? Well, I see we got some new blacktop, we'll see if that, I don't know if that's going to improve any business, but it need necessary... It's nice, the message is on paper, but eliminating most of the rocks, still got to go home. Not bad, not that bad as they are.
It's two hundred percent better, it looks great.
Any other mechanical problems in there?
Um, we had a little issue, you can see, in July with the ice machine, and then we had the AC fixed, and, but otherwise, knock on wood, we're good right now.
Well, I don't see anything else, any, any other questions for? No, this is a, after Rainier days, we don't have, the rest of the month, right, until September, I guess?
Well, we have the chamber business after hours. The chamber business after hours, and then we're gonna...
Thursday.
Yep, and then we have a class reunion this weekend. So we'll, we'll end on a good note, regardless.
Business after hours by the seven?
Yes.
How are your inventory, you know, like you say, prices are going so much, it's hard to get products out of there. And I don't think liquor's such a big deal. Yeah, have you seen any issues here trying to get a product?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
For the last two years, it's touch and go. There'll be like certain, like Canadian whiskeys, they're kind of hard to get right now. Right now, um, well, for sure, we had trouble with Crown for a long time, and then that came in, and then, of course, the prices went up. So there's, luckily, we work with like four liquor distributors, and I just go with the cheapest one at this point to see, you know, trying to keep the prices the same without having to rise, you know, raise them. But sometimes you have to go with the highest one if you can't get the product.
Well, I think Todd made a good point, you really have to watch that stuff. This is not a filling state, well, I guess it is a filling station, but it's not that gas where you buy the stuff and the next day you can raise it, you know, ten cents, and the next week they have to drop it five cents.
Right.
Kind of set a price for a drink and kind of, kind of live with that for at least a certain amount of time with the people who's getting too upset, I guess.
Yep.
So you really have to, I think if you can control the inventory, you have a cost on those inventories, you know, what you, you know, the price of where we sell the stuff for now, so if there has to be a price adjustment, you can add inventory as well.
I got a question. What's under Miss Way is non-tax? Because in twenty twenty-one, you had four thousand dollars of Miss Way is non-tax, and this year, there's only one thousand nine hundred...
I'm sure that's what's happening.
It would have been clothing, because remember, we separate, separated it out?
Right.
That's what most of the non-tax is, clothing, cigarettes.
Just that it's like almost double?
Yeah, clothing and, clothing and cigarettes, so you must have...
So you just want to add to the clothing issue I did last year.
I didn't order any clothing for July.
That's the difference on that, because we sold a lot of clothing last year. There's probably going to be a...
Now we have to move this out.
There is, but it's hard to store it all. You know, the more you buy, the cheaper it is, but where do you store it?
I just wanted to know what that was under. All right.
Anything else for? Make a motion to approve, we just talked about it. Uh, maybe I'll second the recommendation. You have a recommendation, second, all in favor. Aye. Both. So carried. Okay, next order of business, uh, you and Local Ninety-Nine.
Thank you for putting us on your agenda tonight, I appreciate it. Well, my name is Al Laffner, I'm the business agent for Local Ninety-Nine, the Hotel Bartenders Workers Union. We, uh, the bartenders approached me some time ago about the possibility of requesting that we mutually agree to reopen the wage section of the contract. As you remember, you know, over a year ago, we were in the middle of a COVID pandemic, which was not the city's fault or anybody's fault, that was just reality, and the business was not doing good. And in spite of that, we got an increase. The bartenders are, are telling me that it's turning around, it's doing, the bar is doing well. Jamie and I have been talking, and they would request that we would pass some of those successful earnings on to the bartenders. Jamie, do you have?
Um, it's, so this is, I guess I'm speaking on behalf of me and my coworkers. Um, our jobs have, well, many of you were, if not all of you, were at Rainier Days and you see how hard we work, and that's not just once or twice or three times a year, that could be potentially every weekend, of course, not to that volume of customers, but our work is, is not done at one-thirty when we kick our customers out. Sometimes we're there until two-thirty, three-thirty, we have work, a lot of work to do some nights. And it's becoming to the point where coworkers are saying it's not worth what we make anymore. We're, I don't want to say we're taking on more responsibility, but in a way we are. We're there extra long now because we have six bags of money to count for the rec club on top of cleaning the bar, on top of dealing with customers... six bags of money to count for the rec club, on top of cleaning the bar, on top of dealing with customers that may be in really at the end of the night, or you know, it's just a lot of, um, seems like extra, that maybe, we're, we're busier than we have been in a while.
So, there's an ask here, or?
If we mutually agreed to reopen the wage section of the contract, and we could schedule a, you know, a time when we could sit down and negotiate that.
How long is the current contract?
We just did it last year.
In answer to your question, you, the two asked us in the contract?
Just to open up the wage section of the contract. Compensation for the senior bartender.
Well, how long, excuse me, how, how long does the contract run for?
It runs for, yeah, it's, uh, effective is August one-twenty, two, two thousand twenty-one through July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. We're not looking for a contract extension, it's just adjust the wages within the current contract.
And this would be for the senior, senior bartenders only?
The three, the three bartenders that are, collectively, they have about fifty years of experience working here. Serving the public through the municipal bar.
I may be out of line, but may I ask, uh, what, how to add the tips that? I noticed there's more boxes, and I also noticed that you guys get more tips from playing pull tabs. I mean, there's a big increase in there, um, I wanna know how that affects you guys' salary wages, because I know you're making way more tips now than you were before.
Not always, it's not always gains. Um, there are, of course, certain people that are there to play daily, those people are not always there, like when we come in at night. I might not sell pull tab all night, after a certain point. So, those tips are not there. Sometimes I'm, sometimes they are, most times they're not anymore.
So, are you saying the tips vary depending on what shift you're on, is that a direct statement?
Yes.
Do we rotate the shift, or do we, you know, do some always get the, the big tip shift?
Most shifts are rotated.
Excuse me?
Most shifts are rotated. There's a couple on the weekend, or Friday is the only day that two bartenders have a regularly scheduled shift.
If the, if the wage conversation were to be reopened for the senior bartenders, I'm assuming that that, I, obviously, would be back at the negotiation table for those senior bartenders. And depending on what would have been tipped that we decided upon, like, if there's an agreement that, if you can't find a middle ground, I mean, what happens then? Because we, we have a contract that's, is it void once we enter into renegotiation?
No, it wouldn't. No, it wouldn't be void, you know, i- if, if you approve, if you mutually, if we mutually agree to open up the wage section, we give up the right to strike over that. There's no strike, there's no, what, you know, demonstration, whatever, we just come to lottery heads and don't agree. I'm guessing that's not gonna happen, but, you know, we don't have a proposal here tonight, because it'd be premature to have a proposal unless we agreed mutually to open up the table to do that.
So, if we don't come to an agreement during the renegotiation, then go, automatically go back to the original wage?
The contract, the contract would stay as is until expiration date?
I feel it's important to go back to the negotiation table for the senior bartenders. And I feel that way simply because I know that the union is a business, and it works for the city, and it's a successful business, but it's not just a business, we're a community bar. We have a community, there's people who have ex, family extensions, it's a, a very special place, and I think that we should value our senior bartenders that work very hard to make it that. That's just my perspective, but being as someone who myself is hourly, and who feels the crush of what's going on right now, I empathize, and I think there's probably a reasonable pathway to that, and I would, I would be able to doing that. I would be the one that negotiated, negotiated with you guys early, earlier, it was a year or so ago, and I don't know where anyone else stands here on the council, but I would be open to doing that, and I would report the motion to, to go back to the, the negotiation table for the senior bartenders' wage.
That would be high.
Mm-hmm.
How would we figure out how, how much additional, are there getting any, any utilities? I mean, it's all about money. You gotta figure out whatever it is. Obviously, you're selling more utilities, most likely are more, how determine how much that is? Because any candy go to a wage negotiation, there's going to be, are we going to get a five percent increase, or if we get a ten percent of the utilities, are you going to do this five percent? We're not asking for any of that, but I believe what the numbers are.
That's why we have negotiations.
So, I guess that's why we have to have.
And that's why I asked the question, if you don't, if you don't.
That's right, but that's what I'm saying, we have some way of determining that, and I put the owner's name in, because they're the ones that are getting it, I don't know, that's why, but.
Do you have an?
I think Jen will have some, you should.
Yeah, the, the contracts that I've negotiated, there isn't anything more fickle than a tipped employee, sometime, when it's good, it's good, and when it ain't good, it's not good at all. Uh, that, that depends on, sometimes the season, uh, i- i- I'm based out of Duluth. They do their best business, obviously, in the summertime, because that's when it happens, that's when you're doing your, probably your best business. You get close to the holidays, believe it or not, that, uh, not everybody is, is, is out and about, so. They do a decent business at, uh, Penleyville down there, but in between, Thanksgiving is like the dead time, nobody's, you know, it's not like partying time. Uh, and then after Christmas, it is dead, so you're, there's long periods of time. Now, you're a neighborhood bar, that's a little bit different, uh.
Any time it's dead over there is during deer season?
Pardon me?
I said, the only time it's dead over there is during deer season.
Most of the winter.
Well, I gotta tell you, if we do that, or so you're, so you're, or, I think we should, I have no problem listening to what they, they're, they're asking for, and I'm not saying we're giving anything, or anything, we have a contract that's almost new, and it's put at ten for two years, and we understand that, so there'd be no ramifications, as far as should the contract continue? So, all this is, I, I, I think that's mainly because of the value you put on the, on the employees and the job they are doing, and I think we can listen to them. So, I, I'd be willing to, to, of negotiations that everybody else is, so. At, at that point, answer to your question right now, uh, give a moment.
Yeah.
Jen, nice question, and then Todd seconded. Also, um, at the same time, we could say, what Jen and Todd can do is meet next Tuesday in the afternoon, perhaps, with Jamie and Al, and then there could be a closed meeting at six o'clock next Tuesday before the regular council meeting to present it to the council.
If you, uh, I said, if we're opening yours, so, on next Tuesday you are, okay.
I don't just name the time, I got it.
Ju- just for, it is getting real busy in international pause with the paper mill shutdown, I was lucky to get a two-day reservation next week, so I can be here Monday and Tuesday of next week, but they couldn't guarantee me anything, they, they said it.
Probably not necessarily.
Every hotel in town, and if you got a cot in the backyard, there's gonna be somebody sleeping.
Shut down starting next week.
And then a bass fishing tournament.
Anyone else next week?
But you say you can get a room on your Tuesday.
Yeah, I've got a res, I got it nailed.
Yes.
Well, the motions here go open, negotiations are not, so anybody?
I did, you started.
Check in, all favor. Aye. Both, so carry. We're setting a Friday, I think, and I guys work out the date and everything.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Uh, Bill? Thanks for your efforts this week, Jen.
Yes.
Welcome.
Well, Bill, uh, matters been put on your head here, so far you stepped up, and played as far as I can see, you guys, Rainier Days and everything else, and uh, hopefully everything is continuing, I don't, I don't see any major problem to clean up after what this, and contractors, you know, they work, and the things are going ahead. Maybe this time of year, what, what is on your agenda?
Just keeping up with mowing and weed whacking it with my summer help, which I will have for about two more weeks, then you'll be going back to school. And, uh, mowing's gonna be slowing down now, it's getting that time of year. Mowing is gonna be slowing down now, because of the time of the year it is, and, and everything, and, uh, just keeping up with the storm drains when it rains, and keeping them clear, and
Well.
Everything with Rainier Days, I'm good.
Appreciate it, you're welcome.
Anything, any?
Yeah, I've got, I've got one, one thing that's popped up, uh, Mr. Wilbur Reed brought the, um, the culvert over by Burger Street on his corner. And culverts come up so much that it's not even doing what it's supposed to be doing, so we need to address that.
It's not draining, it's not draining.
No, it's not draining at all, so, I mean.
Nick did try to push, Nick did try to push that culvert down last year in my conversation, it didn't work. He's pretty frustrated that, I mean, it looks like it's falling off. Is that a city project, that they would dig that up to replace that, or how does that work?
Well, currently, how culverts work, if, if, if they're accessing your property, it becomes your liability.
But it's not on his property.
If it's not on his property, then it becomes our, you know.
This is the city.
From the process from, the ditch already hits a load to the park, and that one is called so hot.
Is there blacktop in China?
Yeah, remember when they did blacktop there about three years ago or whatever? They should have did something with that then, but I think it is blacktop over.
And the, there's a big hump, uh, in the road, like, kind of like a miniature version of what's there.
Standing wire, this ditch has never had that before.
Yeah, I know, he talked to me about that as well, and I'm glad you brought that up.
Well, culvert turner to put in, but it should be put in properly, which is usually, if they're on blacktop, there should be a chop saw, you know, kind of each side, so that it's a neat line. Then they remove, they dug out, it's, it's a frost action, you know, different soils, heat at different times, and, and most culverts are near surface, other blacktop, or they end up digging up through the blacktop, so it's something that probably will have to be adjusted, like you said, so you'll have to.
It needs to be addressed.
I'll see if I can arrange, and I don't think we have a saw here, right?
That, that seems like something that we would hire Steve Boynton to do.
What's that?
We usually, we would hire Steve, Steve Boynton to, to do that, this equipment, to buy the culvert and stuff, that, that's generally.
It, it shouldn't be much of a deal with, I mean, kilo of culverts, not a lot of them. I guess, get Stevie or somebody to look, okay?
Alright, that's great, I can pass that on to Wilbur.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, doing a good job, thank you for standing up.
Yes, thank you for your.
I have. Bill's doing a good job of stepping up. I myself feel as a man of stepping up and doing the job he should be. I don't know if this is the time to bring it up, or the proper, but, uh, we do have the wage for Nick that we can move over to Bill until, uh, maybe on a temporary basis, until Nick comes back. If it gets to the point where Bill feels that he can't handle it, can't do it, well, then you can drop him back down, and it's regulated, but not feeling that. Right now, he stepped up to the plate, he's doing the job, um, I think he should be compensated for it.
I would agree, and I've seen this done other places too, where they serve as interns for certain, like, certain amount of time, and then if, if they decide it's not a good fit, they, they will drop that down to the bill, or, that is, if you're in, I mean, I'm assuming, yeah.
I'm assuming they're all right now.
Yeah.
I would make the motion or recommendation that we bump Bill up to the, um, the title of the maintenance manager, or, on an interim basis, depending on if he likes it, or whatever, and then when Nick comes back, then we look at other things. But that's what I recommend, because yes, I think he deserves to have the, the wage that goes with that. So, that's my recommendation.
Does that, what, over five years' experience, huh?
Six years, uh, becoming more uninvolved in two thousand seventeen, and then more involved as I got to know the water system, the meter system, reading meters, helping with every water break since two thousand seventeen, and going to all the water classes when they come here.
Well, I think if we're, we're really, in spite of Bill's horrible situation, we're really lucky to have basically an understudy, which is kind of what I would consider, like, you your head is where a lot of the stuff goes on every single day, and you talk to Nick, and I'm sure you have access to Nick when he feels able, and to the water guys, and so we'll have support systems hopefully to get through this time that, you know, when you're without him, so.
Exactly, yes.
So, we have a motion or a recommendation to promote, uh, Bill to, or give Bill the title of acting maintenance manager until we have to look at the situation, obviously, Nick's not here, and everyone get premature, thinking we would have to replace him, or get somebody else, or do all this other stuff. So, I don't want to be premature in that, so the motion is to, uh, make, uh, Bill acting maintenance manager, uh, and then adjust the wage accordingly, I think what we should, and that's the motion, I think for wages, because Nick was a salary, he's an hourly person, we should look at it as a wage.
Well, exactly.
It was not salary, oh, I mean, well, we should look at a wage increase that percentage should be over, whatever that is. Uh, maybe we should, uh, take that over and make that motion, uh, to the, not at the council meeting next week, and let, uh,
We'll table that motion, and then the motion.
In the interim, you'd be acting mayor, uh, acting.
We just wanna give a guess, figure what that is.
And then we'll, we'll adjust the salary, or think of, or the compensation, to think of, what you guys think, or, so, in the next, at our council meeting next week, we should be able to make that decision, and figure it out. Once it's settled, thank you.
Yeah, you want?
Can I get a second?
I'll say.
Own favor?
Aye.
Both, so carry, uh, FEMA update, like, that, that?
Yep.
Clear, what? Clear, not easy.
Clears, but, um, I had an intended meeting last week, um, at the county with, it was with the Minnesota Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management, which assists entities with all the FEMA, um, relief, public assistance relief, and they went through the, um, FEMA categories, and I have listed on that page, and they got all the agencies introduced into the grants portal, and, um, anyway, that's the process we, we're in right now. They will assign a project or program delivery manager to us, and set up a, maybe it's a virtual meeting, and, um, not sure when that will be, but it will be sometime, I mean, the next, I thought, thirty to sixty days, and then, and I've already pretty much done the paperwork, you know, because.
What's wrong?
Yeah, and you can pull the forms off of the FEMA website, and we had done the forms before in twenty fourteen, um, but so that's, that's where we are right now, so whenever they get in contact, I can sit down with council and look over what the, um, damage inventory is that I have listed. Nick was helping me with this, and he's got numerous pictures that I've spammed that he should be able to forward to me, um, sometime in the near future, but I'm not, I'm impressed of him just yet, because I haven't even heard from him yet, so, just an update on where we are. I, I included that, um, the guidance on N and A and submerged roads, because we had looked at, um, Duluth Street on the river in front of Seven Oaks Park, and we might, would have to get an engineer to declare that this damaged, that it is damaged, but, anyway.
Would that be one of our investigations? With the name of our investigation?
Well, or Joe, because Joe's been working on all that anyway. And there's a lot of, uh, real categories they talked about and lots of public assistance. Um, a lot of the stuff we had is pretty straightforward. Um, but if anybody has any real questions, we can always sit down, especially when the FEMA people are on the board.
Can you pick us in on that? Was that the, um, you just got, uh, other business over opening bar, anything?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks to Jen, the staff at the bar, rec club, the planning committee and the council members that were able to attend. What a fantastic we can do without standing. It just goes to show you that people involved in this community are our most important asset.
Resource.
So when you negotiate that wage with bartenders, keep that in mind and Bill.
Well, you took the words out of my mouth, I just want to thank everybody for the fantastic, great, great year days. I don't want to name anybody else. I really don't want to name anybody because I'm afraid I might lose somebody. So funny, it was a fantastic operation and it just going happen. There's a lot of moving parts, lots of people involved. It's a great turn, all things getting better every year. It, you know, the thing is it's hard to talk, it's true. You've got, you've got raised the bar, the rest of it, but hopefully we never get to the top. But it was fantastic. I want to personally thank everybody in Rainier and all the people that did so much work. It is that community, you get a great amount of these. Something start with the pancake breakfast, came in with all the vans and eggs and smart kids and all this other stuff that goes on. So a great, great turn.
How many pancake breakfasts was this year?
Thousand twenty-five. Last year was twelve hundred, so.
Or second highest.
Maybe over a thousand, it's pretty nice.
Yeah.
Well, how many pancakes?
Uh, five, five. Yeah, six five-pound bags and half a bag left, I think. We had thirty pounds of sausage in there, probably a can of. But it, it was right on, on.
Well, that's a good little can, if there's nothing else.
Want to do a turn, second?
All favor?
Aye.
Crazy.